For A's 2019, we've got a packed agenda today. So, we are going to lead off with item, which item number is this? It's the Fair Housing Assessment Summary of Findings. Liz Bloom is here with some students. And so Liz, if you would please come forward and offer the presentation and introduce your students, I guess collectively. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Jeff, do you want to, or you want me to?
Sure, I'd be happy just to tee this up quickly, just to, so every five years, as a result of us having, receiving federal funds, the community development block grants, home funds, emergency solutions grants, we're required to do an assessment of fair housing. It used to be called an analysis for impediments to fair housing. So, this year, as part of our five-year planning process, we worked with Community Building Institute and with the City of Cincinnati to do this on a much broader level, actually in a form of shared services, with the perspective being that when you're doing this type of an analysis, it's really community-wide. You don't want to limit it by just a parochial view of the City of Cincinnati and Hamilton County, but we do a much better job of analyzing these problems and identifying solutions if we look at this community-wide. So, Liz Bloom from the Community Building Institute is here to present the findings on this. I would also note that, not by design, but there are multiple recommendations in this report that also fit into the Board's policy agenda and also into the 2020 recommended budget as it relates to revitalization of first ring suburbs, housing trust funds, catalytic economic development to assist in housing development, code enforcement, that type of thing. So, a lot of great information, a lot of great work done. Just want to thank Liz and her staff, and want to thank Joy Purison, Holly Christman, the folks from the City of Cincinnati who partnered with us on this as well. So, with that, Liz.
Thanks very much. Thank you all for having me and for entertaining this topic. I think it's an important one, and I'd like to echo something that Mr. Aludo said. I think that we did this with the city and the county together is really powerful because I think housing is something that spans political boundaries, and I think it's really helpful to have had this perspective. So, as Jeff said, this is a requirement every five years, and the question that HUD is asking is, are there discriminatory practices going on in these jurisdictions? And if so, what's the nature of those practices? And what might we do to mitigate those things? It is illegal to discriminate against people around housing based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, disability, and family status. Seems obvious, but I think it's important to sort of have that in front of us. So, the purpose of the Fair Housing Assessment is to assess the climate around housing in this region, to identify problems that any of those folks in protected classes might be having in getting housing that they want, in the places that they want to live, and to assess what the nature of that kinds of, what those problems are, and to understand what stakeholders are doing to mitigate those problems, and to understand what we might do to get better at what we're doing. So, I think it's really, the starting point for us here was, how has this region recovered from the housing crisis in 2007 and '08? As we all know, the foreclosure crisis was significant here. It affected city neighborhoods, suburban communities, and I think that there has been sort of a differential recovery. I think it's fair to say that Hamilton County has largely recovered from the recession. There are lots of housing markets in the region that are performing more strongly than they were before, but there are lots of housing markets for which that is not the case. So, if I could, for those of you who know, I'm sort of geographically based, I think that communities on the east side of Hamilton County have largely recovered and are probably in better condition than they were prior to the recession, the sort of red zone that you see, and this is a general approximation. Those communities on the west side of Hamilton County have, some of them recovered, not all of them, from a housing value perspective. Those communities in the central sort of cluster of Hamilton County, I keep calling them the north-central cluster of Hamilton County, have had very different kinds of results. Some communities have recovered, many have not. Their housing values are still depressed, building conditions are still a problem. There is increasing poverty in a number of these communities. I'm going to give a quick pitch for Tom Carroll, who is currently the city manager in Silverton, has done some really outstanding detailed work around this. We also have, in green, areas that are sort of in persistent poverty and where poverty has deepened over this time period. And then, in purple, I think we have places in the urban core that have really rebounded and done so remarkably. This region has become almost a national model around how do you harness revitalization and the preference for urban living, and I think that's a good thing. It also means that we're displacing residents in neighborhoods where they historically lived because property values are heated up. So, the question here is discrimination, and I want to say, and we certainly have done a lot of work, and there's been lots and lots of conversation on affordability in this region around housing. Affordability and discrimination are two different things, but they are very tightly interwoven trends. And so, it's very hard to talk about discriminatory behavior without talking about affordability because if you can't find affordable housing, that just exacerbates everything else, makes it more difficult because every unit that's affordable, there's competition for that unit among several people, many of whom probably are among protected-class individuals. We have, we did, so, one of the things I'll tell you is the process. We did 16 separate focus groups, eight of them geographically-based, eight of them with protected-class households. We did almost 500 surveys in Hamilton County, including the City of Cincinnati, and then we did lots of data research, all of which is available in the big fat heavy document. But what we heard from people is that there is absolutely overt discrimination taking place in Hamilton County, principally around areas around age. Boy, young people aging out of foster care are having a really hard time, and they're being told by potential people who will leased to them that they don't feel they're, have enough experience to rent. So, they're being discriminated against pretty overtly around race, or I mean, age. We also hear from families with children that they have a hard time finding units, both because it's hard to find affordable units that have two and three bedrooms, also because they hear from landlords that kids will be too hard on the units. Neighbors don't like kids, we don't want to rent to people with kids. People with disabilities are also having a difficult time, partly because they can't find units, and partly because landlords are not willing to make accommodations that they need. All three of these protected classes, young people, people with children, and people with disabilities, reported they were discriminated against for those reasons. I think that's an indication that both landlords don't understand what the laws are, they don't think there are repercussions for discrimination, and often, these folks don't complain because they don't think they're going to get anywhere. The most prevalent complaints that we hear from home are around people with disabilities. Often, young families are worried that they might, they might put their families in danger, they might lose their kids. Young people don't think anything's going to happen, and they don't think anybody's going to listen to them, so they don't bother. There's another kind of discrimination that I want to talk about as well. So, I think that discrimination around race and ethnic origin, those kinds of things, it's harder to, it's harder to see sometimes because people don't say, "Not going to rent to you because you're black." What happens, though, is there are lots of places in the county where people just don't even go. They don't go to eastern suburbs, they don't go to western suburbs, both because they perceive there's no housing that's available to them, and there's no social networks. Like, they don't know anybody. They don't even know where Anderson Township is. And if they need to use public transportation, they probably can't get there anyway. And so, there's some systematic, some systematic discrimination that takes place based on those sorts of trends. And then finally, I think there are market dynamics, primarily these market strengthening communities that are displacing low-income residents who have historically been in those neighborhoods because there just aren't as many units available. The other thing that I want to point to, and there's extensive research in the document, if you want to go to page 178, but there is absolutely disparate opportunity in different parts of the community. I've already talked about the fact that public transportation doesn't exist in large parts of the community or is difficult to use, doesn't exist very obviously on far eastern suburbs, far western suburbs. It exists in the north-central communities, but oftentimes, it requires a trip from there, downtown, and then back out to get to a job, which makes it really impractical. Access to good schools, healthy food, parks is not equal all through the county, which means that some areas of opportunity are less of an opportunity than others. Protected-class households are much more likely to be living in, housing in poor condition. Boy, some of the interviewing that we did, and people talked about the condition of units that are available to low-income residents, was pretty heartbreaking. I want to talk a little bit about immigrant populations, too, and refugee populations who are living in some very, very poor conditions, partly because that's all they understand, that's all that's available. They don't complain as well because they are afraid they're going to get evicted, or they don't believe that anybody's going to do anything about it. The fear of eviction is a really strong negative motivator for people staying in very poor quality housing. They don't think there's anything else out there, and they're, in many cases, right. Access to capital and mortgage and home repair loans is also a huge issue. Interestingly, there are lots and lots of units in Hamilton County that are available, small, single-family detached brick houses, great houses in good school districts that are 900 to 1,200 square feet, but if I can't, but most lending institutions don't want to do mortgages for under $100,000, and these houses are for under, under $100,000, which makes them great affordable housing for a lot of families, but the lending just doesn't work. So, they can't get, either their credit is bad, they can't get a mortgage low enough, they can't get a purchase rehab loan, somehow lending is not working for them. So, the process of a fair housing assessment asks us to make recommendations that are designed to mitigate the discrimination that we see in the region. I will tell you, this document is a little bit different than in past years. The model that we've seen in other places is there's lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of detailed recommendations about spend $15,000 here, spend $20,000 here, add a job here, do this thing. We felt like, at this point, we needed to take a broader perspective, and it was a bigger picture. So, there are recommendations in two areas. One is around resources. There need to be more resources dedicated to this issue. What we talk about here is an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, maybe at the city and the county, that has some dedicated revenue stream. Talking about catalytic economic and community development funding in those north-central Hamilton County communities. Those communities are losing their tax base, they're dealing with more folks with more needs, their building conditions are deteriorating, and they really need support. Because they're all small communities, nobody has got enough available resources to come up with a couple-million-dollar project to turn a community, but that's what it's going to take, and they understand that. We're talking about supporting regional and community-based organizations that create and support affordable housing. I think there are plenty markets in Hamilton County and the City of Cincinnati that will not have affordable housing if there aren't mission-based organizations holding on to those units, and we need to fund those organizations. And support agencies that support protected-class households, home, strategies to end homelessness, all of the people who are dealing with folks in crisis situation and emergencies, those are, those are awful times for families and households. And our safety net, while we have invested in it, has holes in it. And I think one of the reasons it's hard for a lot of, a lot of those organizations to respond is because there's nowhere for them to take people, and there's no real good answer. But those are desperate times for families, and we don't have good safety nets that hold those folks up in those kind of crisis situations. I've said it several times, expand public transportation so that all of those opportunity areas become open and resources for communities. Create more lending products that work for protected-class households, that's both small mortgages, that's purchase rehab loans, that's credit to do home repairs when necessary, improve housing crisis response, which I just talked about. Engage in active, consistent, professional code enforcement. As the federal government has stepped away from providing direct funding for units of public housing, we've moved all of that into the private market. And what protects the private market, a renter or an owner from a unit in bad condition is code enforcement. And our code enforcement system is very varied throughout the county. In some, in some places, small communities have a part-time person, in some place, they have a contract person, and I think that there are all kinds of ways that the code enforcement community could get more support. We need to be talking about using technology more effectively in how people do code enforcement. We need folks to be sharing information about troubled landlords and big REITs. How does Community A deal with them? Can they help Community B? That sort of thing. And we're talking about changing zoning codes to open up more areas to protected-class households. There are large swaths of eastern and western Hamilton County where there is no by-right multifamily zoning allowed. It may be a planned unit development approval, but all of the zoning in place that's mapped is single-family, and in some cases, large lot, single-family zoning. So, I think changing zoning would really help open up some of these other communities to additional kinds of housing that would serve protected classes better.
Okay, I think I did that in 15 minutes. I'm happy to answer questions or not. I know you have a lot on your agenda today.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have just a couple of questions. Related to the study in general, what is the volume of people that are impacted by some of the challenges that you have identified?
So, glad you asked that. So, in the original affordability study, we know that about a third of county households, about 100,000 households are cost-burdened. In other words, they're spending more than 30% of their income on their housing. There are 200,000 African-American residents in Hamilton County, there are 20,000 Latino residents in Hamilton County, there are 31,000 other non-white residents in Hamilton County, there are 50,000 residents that have some kind of ambulatory disability, there are 54,000 people living in the most depressed disadvantaged neighborhoods, those areas of persistent poverty, 75% of them are black. Over 8,000 households have been evicted between 2014 and 2016, and we know that-
Say that again? 8,000 in two years? Three years?
Yep, 8,465 in two years. It's a lot of households. That's, that's the definition of a crisis for a family. In 2017, Strategies to End Homelessness identified over 7,000 households who were homeless. So, we are leaving a lot of our neighbors behind as the housing market performs in the way that it does.
Thank you. I have one more question, but I'm going to turn it over to my colleague.
I have no questions. Very thorough report, and if I have any questions, I'll certainly get back with you-
Please do.
-and all the work that the students have done, the young people have done. So, I certainly appreciate it, and this is an area that we definitely need to look into further. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Porte?
Madam President, thank you. I'd like to echo Vice President Semenado-Dumas's remarks and thanking Liz Yu and the Community Building Institute and the students who are here today. Great report, a lot of great work that went into this, but I hope you don't feel like you're done because there's a lot more work that, that needs to be done, which leads me to my first question, if I could. The issue of linkages between public transportation and good housing, we know that the current bus system is still modeled after a hub-and-spoke, traditional-type of system. You mentioned it, Liz, in your remarks, how people have to come downtown and then go back out to where they need to go. It's one of the key findings in the, the many studies that the Southwest Ohio Transit Authority has generated over the years and others. I guess, first, were you involved in any of that planning work that sort of commissioned regarding routes, maintenance of routes, and the need to identify new routes for public transportation?
Not in that, not at that level of detail. We certainly were engaged with them in some of the community conversations that took place, but not at the level of route detail.
Well, you need to be. So, it's been a week and a day since the three of us and a whole host of others gathered near the corner of Redding and MLK to announce the new sort of funding plan that we hope will be supported by voters next year. That plan will provide seed money, and a lot of seed money, for looking very, very closely at the issues of routes, which should be maintained, what new routes will need to be added to the system in order to address issues like this. So, I would encourage you, encourage you, Liz, very, very strongly, and the university and the institute, to get involved in that, and if you are having a hard time in terms of that engagement, let any of the three of us know, and I'm sure that we'd be more than happy to-
That's great.
...intervene on your behalf to make sure that you're involved.
That's great. We'd love to. I will add to that, as we talked in suburban communities all over the place, particularly our north-central suburban communities-
Yep.
-there's a fair amount of support for public transportation. Those folks know exactly what their residents need, and they realize that expanded public transportation is going to be a really important part of that service.
It is, it is. So, I'm glad to hear that, but-
We heard a lot of support in a lot of places.
Well, the support in a lot of places is important to be voiced at the outset and around a campaign to get something adopted. Where it really becomes key is after the votes are counted, and if, if they are successful in getting the measure adopted, the real key advocacy period begins then, of course, to make sure that, while it was great to have you at the table to get the vote out, it's going to be even greater to have you at the table, to make sure that the planning and the implementation of that plan is done in a way that, that you think is appropriate and necessary. Second question, related to, if I may, Madam President?
Yeah.
Thank you. Related to the number of evictions of households that are in poverty, will become homeless because of the eviction.
Yes.
Have you tracked any of those families at all to be able to discern what happened to them afterwards? How quickly did they find new housing in order to settle in? I know the shelters, quite, they're not designed for families, they're not designed in keeping family units together, so there is a real issue there that's got to be addressed, but the real question is, do you feel like you've done a deep enough dive into that issue of how families are torn apart when they become homeless because of an eviction or similar crisis?
No, I don't think so. There's some really good research going on at University of Cincinnati right now, and we've coordinated with them. I can tell you that of the 8,000 families who were evicted, put out, something like 200 of them had legal representation-
Okay.
...which is heartbreaking.
Yeah.
But no, I think that's a really, a good place to dig in on some additional research.
And then, I guess, last, let me just ask this, not to say that we have any dollars that are just hanging around right now to throw at the, at the issue, and I don't mean that in a negative way or denigrating way, but what's the, the cost of addressing the need, or if you broke down the need into a prioritization of categories, and you were able to highlight the top category in each of the different areas related to resources and systems and things of that nature? Any idea what, what we're looking at in terms of cost to address that issue? And it's not something, I don't think, that government, local government can, can bear the total cost on. It's going to have to be a public-private partnership solution that will be developed. Certainly, the rehabilitation of existing housing or other buildings in a, they're sort of non-traditional buildings, but could serve a purpose from the standpoint of temporary affordable housing until someone is able to transition into a much better situation.
So, this document doesn't include cost estimates, and I would be, and this is a great way for me to get to my last slide, which I forgot to do. The county is in the middle of starting another consolidated plan activity, and I think we will, we've agreed to be coordinating with you on that-
Right.
-so that we can be hearing from folks and trying to figure that out. The other thing is, Greater Cincinnati Foundation and LISC are convening this county-wide collaborative, and I think that costs are going to be a big part of what those recommendations come back with. So, I will say that in all of these different places, people seem to be coalescing around the big pieces, and what kinds of costs, I think you're exactly right, it isn't just, it cannot be just public funding, it's got to be lots of different funding sources.
Right, right.
And there are policy recommendations that will have an impact that aren't necessarily cost-centric.
Well, I'm very grateful, we all are, for the report, for your work and leadership in that of the university for putting this together, and I feel, I always feel encouraged when students come to visit us and present their work, and it is, it's always stellar work, and it's on point, and it challenges those of us that are in positions of authority to stand up and, and fight for what has to be done in addressing issues like this. So, my, again, my very sincere thanks to all the students and your great, great work here, and Liz, to you also.
Thanks.
You know, we've worked together for a lot of years, and, well, I've worked for a lot of years. You've, you've, you've still maintained your, it's like you've only been at this for two or three years, Liz, but-
Ah, if only.
But I'm, I'm ancient, I'm ancient. But thanks very much.
Thank you.
I just had a quick comment.
Can we just, can we see the students? Will you guys stand up so we can recognize you? I mean, you're all, you're all intermixed there. Thank you. I have a couple of questions, too. So, Liz, very quickly, so you identified the neighborhoods in green as the most challenged?
Yes.
Very generally, where are those? It's hard to tell on the map.
So, it's north and south Fairmont, it's Winton, it's Royal Hill, it's the sort of, all those sort of like, I call them right up against the Mill Creek neighborhoods, lots and lots of concentrated low-income housing-
Okay.
-and, and conditions are desperate in some of those communities.
Okay, thank you. And one last thing from my perspective. So, this is a city-county collaborative. I know LISC and others are working on this, and so, is the next step here to continue to work together through those efforts to determine both a cost perspective, but also a policy perspective?
Yes, I think that's right. I think that what you see out of the coordinated plan is some more detail around all of these sort of areas of implementation and some costs and some sort of next steps.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Porte?
Liz, I just have one additional question. The timeframe, when did you start this assessment project?
It's been about a year and a half, about a year and a half.
Okay.
And I'll say, for data walks in the room, the document, the big document, has all of the original survey work, all of the data from HUD, much more information if you're interested, and I'm happy to answer questions about any of that as well.
And I also observed that 7,200 about neighbors are homeless in 2017. Did you attempt to go out again to get those numbers?
We talked to, we, so, at the point at which we published a document, that was the most up-to-date number that we had from Strategies. They've probably got an 18 number that we could use at this point.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
Yep, absolutely.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could, just very quickly, just as we, as we transition into kind of more of an implementation phase on this, and I mentioned this at the beginning, that it's not often that we have a, a presentation like this that dovetails so seamlessly into something that is before the Board in terms of the 2020 recommended budget, and as the Board of County Commissioners has, over the years, been very strategic and deliberative in terms of using every bit of resource that it can catalytically to try to invest in these types of solutions, whether it's economic development, housing, et cetera. But we've been very limited in how we can do that, and we've been limited, really, in many of our federal funding sources. So, we've used community development block grants, we've used home grants to try to prioritize some of the things that, that Liz spoke about today. And I just wanted to mention, especially for folks who may be watching at home, that the 2020 budget in response, the recommended budget in response to the policy document and the policy perspective of the Board attempts to put forward a vision of how we can bring more resources to the table, not, as Commissioner Porte said, not to solve the entire problem because government can't solve this entire problem, but at least that the county can play a better role as a partner in these types of solutions as we move forward. So, those who want to access the 2020 budget, it's online on the county's website, and does have an entire section devoted to how we use county resources to more effectively provide, provide funding into some of the community revitalization efforts that Liz spoke about here today. So, we can talk more about that tonight at the, tonight's budget hearing.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to what is listed on the agenda as item number one. It's the music venue and hilltop basic resources discussion. While it, the presentation is being set up, let me just offer a bit of a precursor to this one. presentation is being set up, let me just offer a bit of a precursor to this one. So, as many of us know, we've been working to move forward with the music venue down on the banks. A very exciting project that the county, the city, and the Joint Bank Steering Committee all agreed to with MAMI as the producer, or what I call the vendor, on Lot 27. And so, we have been moving forward, or trying to move forward on this for a number of months now. And we've had some complicating factors primarily related to Hilltop and moving the operation there to allow for increased surface parking related to the operations at the banks. And so, we had an action of city council last week that put an end to one of the options that were, that was in front of us related to a location in Queensgate and along the riverfront in trade for some park space in Price Hill. We had been pursuing that for a while. I think some of us were willing to let that play out to the very end because we were hopeful that in the end, Price Hill would get that piece of land to complete the park along the river. That did not come to fruition. And so, in the meantime, we have been talking through some of what the other options might look like to make sure that we continue to move forward and don't have any delays for the music venue. And so, this opportunity that we've got in front of us today helps do that. And I will, I don't know, Jeff, if you're going to tee it up or if Tom's going to tee it up?
Nothing much more than that. I think you framed the issue very well, Madam President. I would just, again, just highlight that, first of all, I want to thank Tom and Roger Friedman, other members of county staff who've been working really tirelessly on this over the past several weeks, as we've recognized that an alternative to what had been the preferred plan that would have provided a price landing park into the, into the picture in Price Hill to the degree we needed an alternative to that, that we had that alternative to keep the, not only the music venue moving forward, but also, as we've stressed at multiple occasions, this is about so much more than just the music venue. It's about some, an additional package of benefits. The music venue, continued progress on the banks, the renegotiation of the Bengals lease, which provides really potentially hundreds of millions of dollars of savings to, to the taxpayer, that all of that could move forward and move forward in a seamless way such that we can advance all of these projects expeditiously. So, with that, I'll, Madam President, turn it over to Tom if he's ready.
And I do want to provide one caveat, just as a reminder, that the MOU that the county struck with the Bengals has allowed for this to move forward because we did not have the money to acquire Hilltop or any portion of Hilltop without the renegotiated lease. And so, the forgone game day payments, the 30 million, has allowed us to move forward on this front. So, I do want to offer that as a caveat. So, with that, Tom, if you would walk us through your presentation?
Sure. And I think first maybe just acknowledge that in terms of our partners that have been with us since really 2015 that are here today. So, the Chair of the Board of the CSO, Rob McDonald, is here, as well as the CEO of the CSO Board, Jonathan Martin, and the CEO of MEMI. And we started this process in the fall of 2015. So, this has been four years in the making. And in addition to that, our partner on the other side that was also very much involved in making all this happen, basically the Steele family that owns Hilltop Basic Resources, John Steele is here with us. He's the CEO of Hilltop Basic Resources. And Kevin Sheehan is also here, the president of Hilltop, and then Tom Teppe, their counsel. I just mentioned that basically, we have been, as I mentioned, working on this for four years. We've been in the process of searching for a site. We thought we had a site identified within close proximity to Hilltop until about eight months ago, when that site was taken off the table by our other partner across the cityway. But in any event, Hilltop doubled down its efforts, put quite a bit of time, energy, and a few dollars to look at a site in Queensgate, which was owned appropriately for that use. But we are here today to talk about a path forward. We're not looking backward, except, as you're all accustomed to, we always have to have a little history in our presentation. So, but for this happening
A little.
A little history. But for this happening, some
Oh, my gosh.
Well, that's, maybe that's why this slide's up there.
Actually, there are a few people, there are a few people that have the ability to turn back the hands of time. But then, this, this young man is in our presence some 21 years ago, when we had a midnight deadline to keep our NFL team in the city. And we were negotiating for no less than 48 hours straight between the city, the county, the Bengals, a railroad, and who else, Roger? I mean, you name it.
County administrator.
Forty-eight hours straight, and we were coming up on the midnight deadline that we had, that had been set. The county commission passed the 1998 redevelopment agreement at about 11:45 PM on that January 31st day. And then, we were on our way to city council. I called then-City Councilman Todd Portune and said, "We are on our way, but we need more time." And upon our arrival, when it was actually 12:15, Todd had taken the liberty of turning the clock back to 11:00, which gave us an hour to debate. But city council, being city council, took three hours to debate and then subsequently approve the 1998 redevelopment agreement. But for that agreement 21 years ago, we would not have started this transformation process. And importantly enough, that 1998 agreement bears very much on what we are doing today. It still is a agreement that's in effect, and it's one that, that actually our duties and obligations are still being fulfilled by the city, the county, and frankly, the Bengals as well. So, where do we start? When President Dreehouse mentioned these lease modifications that were entered into first in November of 2018 were rather, were quite remarkable. And it resulted from the team realizing where the county was coming from with respect to its sales tax fund availability. It was a recognition on the part of the county in what was most important to the team. And, and that's what, that started our process. And even though, and we've talked about this before in prior presentations, what has occurred in NFL stadiums across this country, stadiums that are built to the same vintage as Paul Brown Stadium have been transformed, have been invested to the tune of 250 to 450 million. New stadiums are in excess of 1.7 billion that have been done. But the Bengals came to the county and said, "That's not what we are looking for. We're not looking for those bells and whistles. That is not the most important thing to us, nor to our fan base. We really want two things. We would like to make sure that the fan experience that is so important to this team over the last 51 years is maintained." That was important to them. And they also recognized and had supported for over 20 years, the advancement of the banks project, which has also transformed the riverfront. And just to mention, each and every time we went to the Bengals and said to them, "We need modifications of these development guidelines that were put in place in 1997," the Bengals said yes. When we need, we wanted to bring GE and its 1,600 jobs back here, back to Cincinnati. When we were competing against seven other cities, the Bengals said yes. We'll modify those development guidelines so we could bring them here. Factor. And the same thing occurred with Ray's Apartments, modifying those guidelines. And then, the most recent one occurred as a result of the November agreement between the county and the Bengals, where we modified the guidelines so that the music venue, which was not exactly within that, within those parameters, could in fact, and was in fact, acceptable to the Bengals. In our most recent revision, the Bengals said, "Now that it's been 20 years, some 23 years, let's bring in an urban design architect that can look at what we've built to date, look at the stadium in the context of that development, and we'll look at those development guidelines and modify those as deemed appropriate between the county, the Bengals, and our partner, the city." Our partner, the city. Can't happen without our partner, the city, to modify those. So, that, that was done in November of 18. Protect tailgating. Protect that fan experience. Reinvest in Paul Brown Stadium. The Bengals and the Reds lived through Riverfront Stadium becoming so deteriorated and such disrepair over a 26-year period that it had to be imploded when it was only 30 years old. It had not been maintained properly. The Bengals wanted to make sure that the taxpayers' investment, the largest investment that we have in this county, is protected. And so, they wanted it reinvested. And that's, that's what the county agreed to do. Importantly, and this is something that's near and dear to Todd's heart, were the 13.9 payments, which would have kicked in in 2017. And as a result of our negotiations that we started with the Bengals in 2015, those payments were deferred and deferred until the point where the Bengals said, "We know the banks needs to be built out. We also know that we won't have sufficient parking on the riverfront, even though we're building the largest garage in the entire country when it is done. It won't be sufficient to sustain the banks and parking for downtown workers. We need to acquire what turns out to be 17 acres on the riverfront that frankly Roger and I worked on some 19 years ago when we approached John Steele and had a number at that point. And we should have taken that number now in hindsight, but the county didn't have the funds then. The Bengals said, "We need that. We, and we need that investment to turn the largest privately-owned track remaining on that riverfront and turn it over to the public." And the Bengals provided the path and the means for the county to do that, to not allocate 10 million or 20 million, but 30 million that would have gone to their bottom line and invest in the acquisition of that property. And as we'll talk about it, like everything else that we've done on the riverfront, we are under budget with that acquisition. In addition to that, the Bengals also agreed to defer capital enhancements, which we talked about would be very, given what has happened all over the US in terms of NFL stadiums, could be in excess of 250 million. If we were forced to borrow against our revenue stream that occurs in a positive way to have financing in 2032 and 2033, the county taxpayers would have borne another 138 million in interest. That is a huge tax savings on the part of the county taxpayers. Not to mention, again, the Bengals recognize our model wouldn't support, would not support that borrowing at this point. So, we have moved forward, and the Bengals, as a part of this agreement today, agree that the music venue will move forward and must move forward. The next phase of Smale Park, that is a result of frankly, the innovative approaches that have been developed between MAMI, the CSO, City Parks, and the city, and the county, will advance Smale Park by a full decade. Funding was not anticipated to become available for another 10 years for that two-acre park that we're going to build and bring online with the concert venue in the fall of 2020. So, we are moving forward significantly. As I said this morning, it's not just about a music venue. There is so much more that has been resolved as, as a result of the work that's been in place frankly over the last four years, and quite candidly, over the last four days, where you have the partners with the Bengals, where you have MAMI, CSO, and you have Hilltop and the county meeting ever since last Wednesday, meeting to find resolution because of the urgency and the need to move forward with the banks. So, as I mentioned, the Bengals provided that path. And this is what's interesting. But for the 2019 county Bengals lease revisions, this is what our banks would look like from now until, to basically well into the future. Surface lots between the stadiums. The June 2019 MOU between the county and Bengals said, "We are going to make sure that those surface lots disappear, that it becomes park space or development and entertainment space." That's what that, that's what that MOU did. Notwithstanding misinformation that has been put out over the last six weeks that is frankly irresponsible, because the documents speak for themselves. They're very clear. But for the path of making Hilltop available, which then provides sufficient parking for the banks, provides tailgating, that opens up the remainder of the development. So, this is what we have as a result of that MOU and as a result of the agreement, the innovative agreement that was entered into as a result of the work over this weekend. Over 400 million in development between the suspension bridge and Paul Brown Stadium is now green-lighted. All those surface lots go away, not to return to the riverfront. The music venue, which is the catalyst for that development, the absolute necessary catalyst to ensure you have development north on Blocks 25, 13, and 1, and to allow the development of Lot 24 that has sat there as a partially-built garage facility. If we don't build the music venue, if we didn't build the park to the south, no investor, no developer is going to put money in to townhomes or apartments that overlook a partially-built garage or a partially-built or a surface lot. And frankly, the commitment that was made in 2008 between the city and the county, that when we moved over to Phase 2, the city would make sure that that park was, would be built. That's pursuant to the 2000 city-county cooperation agreement. There's an absolute obligation on the county, on the city, to make sure that that park would be built. But quite candidly, but for the county taking the burden and saying, "We are going to fund and we're going to finance this next phase." And so, as a result of that, we're now prepared that the catalytic effect of the, of the music venue will basically advance over 400 million in development. Obviously, the negative of that, if it doesn't happen, there's a potential loss to the creation of both construction and permanent jobs. And as I mentioned before, when this garage is built out, and remember, we have 180 Walnut that would be coming online in the fall of 2021 with over 1,400 employees, our garage will be at capacity, which means that we had to look once again very seriously at acquiring this 17-acre parcel that is the front door to our city, frankly, the front door to all of Ohio. And it was, as a result of the innovative proposal and work that both Hilltop and the county were able to come up with, we have basically divided this site into three parcels. Parcel 1 is going to be acquired by the, by the county and by, on or before January 1 of 2020, if the board approves the purchase and sale agreement that we're presenting. And that's approximately six to seven acres. That six to seven acres will be turned into a green space. And we've done a lot of work over the last six weeks so that we were not going to put yet more asphalt back on our riverfront that has been there for 60-plus years, but to make sure that we would in fact have a green space. And this green space, once we acquire, will start the work in January of next year and have that park space available in June or July of 2020. That is a full year ahead of what we thought was possible coming into this past weekend. But now, we've advanced that. And Hilltop has agreed that they will temporarily suspend their aggregate distribution business until they find an acceptable relocation site. They've agreed to do that. Why? For the better interest of our community, to say that, "You know what? We're willing to make this sacrifice because it's the right thing. And the sooner we can bring this green space online, the better." And then, within a year after that, we would take down Parcel 2, which is basically at the time that Hilltop has found an acceptable site, a suitable site for its business, is able to construct their new operations. And once those new operations are in place, then the county would take that parcel down. Our target date to do that is next January. But obviously, we have to make sure that they have a suitable site and they in fact get that new plant up and operating. And as you saw in the presentations that Hilltop provided, they are building state-of-the-art concrete plants and, and that are environmentally safe and comply with all the regulations. They've had to do that throughout their 78-plus-year history in our city. And the parcel, and this is not necessary, Parcel 2 and 3 could go, and in fact, will likely go at the same time. But that is the location of the, of the asphalt plant. That is the smallest. It's about 1.3 acres. So, we're all familiar with that. But that's the intention, that basically we will acquire pursuant to this purchase and sale agreement, those 17 acres, and then turn that into green space that will accommodate parking. And this was a rendering done by Michael Schuster Associates to give us an idea of what that could look like. It is true green space. It is real grass. This is not field turf. This is not pavers with, with grass planted in between. This is a system that is used that is sustainable. And as a result, what you'll see in your purchase price is that John Steele has also agreed that he will supply all of the foundational materials that are used, the sand, the gravel, the aggregate, and so on, at his cost. We built that into the purchase price. And once again, to the benefit of the county. And this will be brought online. Our target date for that is August of 2021. Over 17 acres and it will accommodate about 2,000, we think somewhere close to 2,000 cars. Could accommodate buses. You can park buses, RVs on it and so on because there's a structural grid that is underneath the turf. So, that is completely different than anything we've had on the riverfront. Actually, we do have a test case of that in Lot E right now that's, that has been in place Actually, we do have a test case of that in Lot E right now that has been in place for about two years, that the Bengals actually funded and put in place. So in addition to that, this is also a place that we can use for festivals such as Taste of Cincinnati, Oktoberfest, and so on, that currently we don't have, that are basically being used, you know, along the streets. This is 17 acres all the way across from east to west, nearly doubling the size of our park space along the riverfront. So the question is, how much does this cost? Well-
Tom, quick question on that.
Yes.
That accommodates bike trail-
Yes.
-or potential bike trail further connecting the trails going to the east as well as connecting those trails that are being built to the west?
Yes. This is, that is, and that was, Denise had made that a requirement of our specifications, that this would connect first to the east and going out along the Ohio River. And frankly, we saw this as an important piece that would connect eventually when we were working on the Queensgate Price Hill site to enable the west bike trail to be connected. So that's, that will remain on the to-do list, if you will. But absolutely, there will be bike trails. And this is just the first rendering of what this will look like. There will certainly be other iterations, but I think the important point here is this is truly transformative of basically our front door to the city.
That's something that, um, something that we should probably have a presentation just on this little element of it, Tom, to the County Transportation Improvement District where it has resolved as a matter of policy, full connectivity of bike trails throughout Hamilton County. So that you've not just, not only have the Queen City Trail that the city put together, city planning and others, but Green Umbrella, but then, you know, all county trails as well.
Right.
So, you know, it's something that we've already spent money on through the district and this would probably be something that we need to arrange for you to present on there.
Okay. Glad to do that.
Thanks.
I think in terms of this 17 acres, and there's been quite a bit of discussion about the county and where it was in terms of its agreement with Hilltop. And frankly, we have been working with Hilltop, as I mentioned in the beginning, for over four years. They have been a partner in this process. We had an understanding with them early on, what were the components that would be necessary to acquire their property in order for them to relocate, and what were their objectives? And they shared those objectives with us. We had a pretty good sense of what that number would be and that that number was something that we continued to work within over that three-to-four-year period. But we didn't have a purchase and sale agreement executed, we didn't. We didn't have that agreement finalized. And there, as you well know, there was quite a bit of work that was invested by Hilltop's team in trying to find a site. They want to stay in the city of Cincinnati, they have 104 employees, they have an economic impact that we've analyzed as over 52 million a year. They are an important corporate citizen and they have been an important corporate contributor as well to our community with over 104 employees. So we, the county, had a very strong interest in trying to keep them in the city. So as we were doing that, in that period of time, we had understanding and basically what we were looking at is the market value of the property. We also looked at where they would be relocated to and trying to cover that cost in order to accommodate their relocation. In this intervening time, and we've talked about how important it is to keep that number confidential until we come to a finalization of that, simply because we need to do that in the interest of the taxpayers. It's no different than any other buyer that goes to buy a home or anything else, you don't advertise what you're about to buy before you in fact close on it. So where we are today, we're in a position to tell you and advise the board and advise the public that the negotiated purchase price for this property is $29,750,000. That is comprised of two things, the market value of the property and their anticipated site relocation cost. We have covered both of those in this purchase price. And there has been quite a bit of banter that the numbers that have been floated about that that same, those same two elements would cost anywhere from 40 to 50 million dollars and that we were building Hilltop's new concrete plant and we're building their asphalt plant, none of which was true. The county has been very prudent throughout these discussions. They've dealt with Hilltop in good faith, they have tremendous integrity, and this number at $29,750,000 is under the budget when the Bengals said, "We're willing to allocate 30 million to this endeavor." And so we brought that in under budget. Where are we in terms of value? Well, we had an appraiser, Integra, Gary Wright, who we've worked with for some 35 years, excellent reputation throughout the community, did a comprehensive analysis of what the true market value of the real property, just the real property. They can evaluate what a site relocation might cost. The market value of this property, after they do a comparative analysis, is $33 million. $33 million for this property. When we do the analysis of what property was acquired for, back when we did the original acquisition, in order to move Paul Brown Stadium to the west and the county spent some $70 million, bring those values up to today's current dollar value, you're at $2 million an acre. This is roughly $45 a square foot, there's over 700,000 square feet in this 17 acres. The bottom line is, and what this board has said consistently is, "We will pay no more than market value and it will be fair market value." In point of fact, what we've been able to do is bring this in under market value. And that's a combination of a couple of things. One, maybe some decent negotiations. And two, it's also a recognition on the part of John Steele and Hilltop that this is once again, something more than just about a deal. It is about making a difference in the community, about transforming the riverfront, and they want it to be very much a part of that. So we saved substantial dollars for the county taxpayers in negotiating that deal that is in front of you. $33 million, and you could add site relocation costs on top of that, put another four and a half million. So that number would be closer to 39 and we were basically 10 million under what the market would be. So this is an example, just to show quickly, Todd, you had mentioned about what these green spaces. This is the University of South Carolina, what this product looks like in terms of a green space. It is a green space that accommodates parking and this is what it looks like on game day. So it gives you a pretty good sense of how functional it is, but it is not an asphalt parking lot. And that's the structural grid that I had mentioned to you-
Yeah.
...that is basically the part of the foundation of this overall system. So there we go on that. I think we have something else to do. The, oh yeah, the music venue. So the music venue, 25 million, is their current budget plus or minus? Their design is done, they're scheduled to start in November. The garage that the county has had under construction, that is on time and under budget, will basically be ready for them to start their construction of the podium, which they are doing at their cost. This is 100% privately funded and is scheduled to be open in the fall of 2020. And will have, as we've mentioned many times, a capacity inside of 4,500. Outside, we'll have about 8,500 on the two-acre Smale Park addition. The economic impact of now bringing everything forward with the stadiums, with the first two phases of the banks and with Smale, and now phase three being accelerated, and then 180 Walnut, we're at $2.5 billion on this project that started when this young man turned back the hands of time. This will also advance the development of Lot 24, which has basically been put on hold because it's been something that they probably held in hostage, referred to as it's a potential site of the music venue. And as a result, the developers really haven't advanced it. Well, as of today, that will be advanced and there will be great energy and focus on bringing what will be an $85 million, 400,000 square foot development as part of that. By the way, we will create no less than 1,500 construction jobs over the next two years with all of this construction. They, you know, MEMI continues to refine their design. As you can see, it will be, in terms of the riverfront, in terms of cost per square foot, it is the highest and it will have the fit and finish that will be the best on the riverfront. There's no question about it. Drawl over probably close to 350,000 people to our riverfront. So I think, I hope you have anything else.
We do, we do have a couple speakers cards, so we do want to get to them.
Yep.
Right. That's all we really had.
Okay.
So if there are any questions about in terms of the purchase, we do have a copy of the appraisal, if the board would like to look at that. It was a very comprehensive appraisal, they looked at both Cincinnati, Northern Kentucky, quite a few properties. I was personally involved in a transaction involving the Montgomery Insight just three weeks ago that was in excess of $2 million an acre, that's further away from the central riverfront. So in terms of getting a good deal, this one is a very good deal for the county taxpayers.
Thank you. Okay. Stay in abeyance because we've got a couple speakers cards that I would like to get to with the deference of the board. Jean Francois Fliché. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon.
The pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
I just want to thank all of you and behalf of myself and the other merchants at the banks for pushing the music venue forward. It's really a game changer for the business at the banks because the music venue will not only bring a lot of people during the downtime and also the frequency of events. We're talking about 150 events a year while we get about 80 Reds game, about 10 Bengals game, so that will bring people on a continuous basis. So it's a game changer. And then also for the parking lot, the one thing I just wanted to add is, we do need more parking at the banks. So I think that the fact that it's going to be used by the Bengals eight to 10 days a year, I think that's a great extra added benefit, but we need the parking for the business. So thank you for moving this project forward and thank you for MEMI for investing at the banks.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Jim Waring. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. On behalf of everybody who's here, who came down from the banks today to show their support, we just want to say thank you. I think each one of us would come up here and thank you guys personally, but we would be here for a long time. So on behalf of all of us, we want to say thank you to everybody who worked on this project diligently for it feels like 10 years now. We appreciate it. To our friends from MEMI, Jonathan, Mike, thank you guys so much for sticking with this. I know it's not been easy over the past couple months and we truly appreciate it, really do. Bengals, everybody else who got involved, we just want to say thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to recognize there are a lot of retailers in the room from the banks, so thank you all for coming down, we appreciate it, and I know you guys are busy. So I just have a couple things and then I'll turn it over for comments and questions of the board. I too want to, I am very grateful for the partnerships that were forged through this process. This has been a long and arduous process, but here we are at this day where we're moving forward with the music venue and addressing some of the parking needs at the banks. And so I too want to thank Hilltop, who's in the room, CSO, MEMI, the retailers, the Bengals, Tom Gabelman, JBSC, I know Bob Castellini is represented here by Melissa Weidman. So there have been many, many partners to try to move this forward and I think we are all very excited to finally have this part of the issue resolved so that we can move forward with confidence on the music venue on the banks. And I think we all agreed many, many months ago that this was a good project and we've been begging, being begged by the retailers to please give us some year-round activity and energy on the banks to help you do what you do best. And so I am personally grateful for all the partnerships and grateful that we're here today, ready to move this forward. The deal, I don't know, I hope that it was clear, I think it was clear, that we are going to enter into an agreement to utilize half of the property, approximately half of the property. Where Hilltop resides now, Hilltop is going to consolidate their operations and we will use the other half for the parking at this moment in time with the anticipation that eventually that 17 acres will become county-operated and owned land. Obviously, the 30 million from the Bengals has helped us to accomplish that and so that's where we are at this moment in time. So I hope that's a good, a brief summary of the presentation that we had earlier. With that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Vice President Samara Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. Tom, I just had a quick question for you. The Smale Park, do you have a itemized cost of development of the Smale Park?
Sure, and we can provide that to you. So basically, a year ago, remember, the park was not scheduled, that phase of the park unfortunately did not have funding available for nearly 10 years because they were looking for federal funding that probably wouldn't be appropriated for almost 10 years. So when MEMI came forward and said, "Look, we have an interest in doing this," and we had a state grant to basically build the garage on Lot 23 where the park would be and then the music venue on 27, so we had enough money to build the garage. And then we came together and said we were going to build the podium, which is part of the city-county's obligation, and we did that too, so we've got the funding in place to do that. Then we needed money to make it green. So you have to have the waterproofing and you have to have the grass and irrigation and so on. We had a budget of 3 million that we set last summer. MEMI stepped forward and said, "We're going to pay half." And city or city parks, we're not sure which, said they would pay the other half. Okay, that's to get to the base park. Now that's 3 million to make it green and it will have an esplanade. I kind of tried to shorten up the presentation and-
Sure.
-we can do that later. But basically, to make it to Smale standard as we are so familiar with, to have all the granite everywhere and so on, as well as the pergolas that are so common that we now take for granted but are pretty unusual for most parks, is another 8 million. And the Parks Foundation is very committed to go out and try to raise money. We know there's additional money over at the city that almost $3 million that the city has that has been generated from the banks that could be allocated to help the park get done to this male standard. But in any, but we know the base park will look really good and Parks alone has put in another million and a half to make that happen.
Okay. So there was just lately some indication that the parks needed more money-
Correct.
-to make that happen. So how much more are they saying that they need?
So it's a total, Stephanie, it's 3 million to make it green and another 8 million to put in all the pergolas, to put in an additional elevator on Lot 28, which is to the south. But that's all additional finishes to give you that same feel that you have at Smale.
And the reason why I'm asking the question about Smale, I know it's a small part of the whole project, is as you know, I have not been in favor of the music venue, only because we need to be more inclusive as it relates to young people and trying to bring them down there. You and I have talked about the ability to do that. Do we do it with the music venue and that outside area or do we do it with Smale Park? So that's the reason why I'm asking the question, because I want to make sure that how I vote today is not an indication of my approval of the music venue, because you have indicated that I may have some input and maybe given some other ideas on how we can do additional things at the music venue or at Smale Park.
Right. And just maybe to address that for a second, in terms of the music venue, which is, and really, Mike Smith is the expert on this, but I will say that this, what they are building will be like nothing else in the country.
I understand that, but I just want young people to feel comfortable coming down, not just for a concert, but what young people do to bring them down.
Right.
So we talked about some of the ideas, so.
Right. But I think, and I think MEMI, which has also stepped up, by the way, at its cost to manage the programming that will occur, not just in the music venue, but also in Smale Park, working with city parks to relieve some of their staffing costs. MEMI is doing that. And so they'll be working very closely, and I was just going to say, it's going to be multi-generational.
Right.
It's not just focused on a single demographic. It is, it is very much multi-generational. And we've got this tremendous opportunity where you have a space, it's some 60,000 square feet, that is not just there for concerts.
Okay.
And the park space, which is two acres, so if you think of Schmidlap Lawn right outside the Lager House, that green space will be double over on the west side. So there's much to do there and it's not all been programmed yet. And I think the next thing we should do is have parks come in and do their presentation because the input that you would like to give is critical to say, "Let's make sure we are in fact getting the younger generation to come down that it is so important that we have."
Thank you.
That's a good point.
Can I, I just want to clarify on a point, that the funding for the base park has been identified, it's this additional funding to bring it up to the standard that is already in place for the rest of the green space that's down at the banks, that money is not in place. And so I just want to be clear on that- And so I just want to be clear on that point because there's been a little bit of discussion on that.
Yeah. And I would just add, at least the last budget that I saw from the city and what we are currently putting into our bid documents, in addition to that $3 million, there's 1.5 million that's allocated to, to certain granite in certain areas, certain pedestrian walkways, certain seating walls and so on, that's in the budget too. So we've already started to raise that and that's, that 1.5, they do in fact have allocated within City Parks. So we've already knocked 1.5 out of the eight total that we need.
Good enough. Thank you. Commissioner Fortin?
Madam President, thank you very much. It, a lot has gone on since that photograph you showed up there earlier today, Tom. But it's exciting to be still a part of, of this collaborative effort that involves the private sector, businesses, small businesses, retailers at the banks. It involves the public entity stakeholders that are not just the city of Cincinnati and Hamilton County, but in a significant way, the state of Ohio as well for investments that they have made and will continue to make in the banks to make this happen. It involves the large business, private business stakeholders that are not just the Cincinnati Bengals, but include as well General Electric and their, their terrific facility and investors to come, who because of this important agreement that we are being asked to vote on and approve today, will open up $85 million of private new development at Lot 24 as opposed to consigning ourselves to something of a much lesser impact on the bank's itself. In fact, would, would consign us to the banks remaining largely as it is today without the benefit of a world-class, state-of-the-art music venue. 4,500 seats roughly indoors, another 8,000 plus on the outdoor lawn that will be completed and that aspect of the Smale Riverfront Park becoming a reality. And now today, we've got and we're presented with, and as are all of you, additional green space at the banks. Not surface asphalt parking or concrete parking or things of that nature, but green space that will have the, all the effect and feel of park space and in fact is park space that on certain days during the course of the year will be held open for parking. But outside of that, will be open to everyone for events, for festivals. The sky's really the limit in terms of the programming that will occur and happen at that location. Over $400 million, let me just let that number roll around in your head a little bit. Over $400 million of, of new investment and development, private money coming into our riverfront and the gateway entrance to the state of Ohio, all being catalyzed because of the tremendous work and collaboration that went into what you have presented to us today. You know, my thanks to John Steele, Kevin Sheehan, you know, folks at Hilltop for being so incredibly supportive in being willing to invest your own money and think outside of the box in order to make this happen. Thanks to the Cincinnati Bengals, which I think as many people know, I have fought some Titanic battles with over the years. The Bengals really stepped up and came through on this as they have been doing in recent years. If, if their success on the playing field would, would match the success on, in the business world, you know, that would be the best of all worlds. And I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not pointing fingers at that effort. That will turn around, you know? There, there's all sorts of signs that the management and ownership really want things to be different on the field. And, and so, you know, I applaud them for those efforts, but in addition to that, applaud them for becoming true collaborative partners and being willing to work with all of us to make this happen as they have. And all these are signs of tremendous partnerships that have occurred in order to make today a reality. And Tom, you know, 20-plus years ago, when I was on the city, and our part in that development agreement was we fought for the ability to hold open and to generate new developable riverfront property between the two stadiums. It was about separating the stadiums instead of having them be back-to-back, right next to each other at the foot of the suspension bridge. We fought for that, we got that. That has allowed for all this other to take place. The National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, the incredible retailers, bars, restaurants, hotel, other commercial and office investments that have gone on at the banks. Moving those two stadiums allowed for all of that to happen. And then, little more than 10 years ago, we not only reached an agreement on how we would move forward at the banks, but we broke ground in April of 2008 at the banks. And it might have been March 31st.
April 2nd.
April 2nd.
We didn't want to do it on April Fool's Day.
Yes. Well, that's, that was a good call by all of us, wasn't it? But we broke ground. At the height of the recession, nobody was doing things like this. But we had a vision and we worked together and we came together and we approved it together and we broke ground together. And we've had over 10 years of almost unbridled success in investment since then, far surpassing what the original estimates were in terms of jobs, both construction and permanent and total economic impact for the city, the county and the region. And that led to so many of you who are here today, putting your money and your vision and your futures into the banks to make it become the tremendous location that it is today. And now with all of your help in coming together and us fighting together for the same goal and the same vision. And especially because of the never say no attitude of our negotiating team on this. Never say no. And that's Tom Gabelman, that's Roger Friedman, that's Jeff Aludo, and, and a cast of, of dozens beyond them. I see Margaret Grossman here. Margaret, you've been just phenomenal in all the work you've done to make everything happen. Our partners with CSO and Mimi in not saying no and having the patience to stay with us and to make this happen. Very grateful to you for doing that. Others would have walked away. You didn't. And thank you for not, because this day is now a reality. So I'll, I'll close just by saying, you know, to have been a part of, of forging the bank's vision at the very beginning to now being a part of this next major step in the continuation of the bank's vision to become far beyond what it was when the planners originally laid out what, what that vision was. It's truly a privilege to, to do that, but never would have gotten done without the drive and the determination of, of all the individuals and organizations, private business entities that we've talked about, that hung in there and stuck together and never giving up. And if there's anything that I believe in, it's, it's not ever giving up. And, and we haven't, you haven't. So today's going to be a reality. So you guys, thanks for hanging with us because next year, you're going to get a lot of new business and foot traffic because of this wonderful world-class event center being open and being a reality in Cincinnati and Hamilton County. And not across the river, but in Cincinnati and in Hamilton County. So to all of you, thank you and God bless you.
Can I just mention just one individual who's kind of taken some undeserved hits over the last week or so, who is the Chair of our Joint Banks Steering Committee?
Bob Castellini.
Who does a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes that people don't see.
Yep.
Bob Castellini has this, this knack and a, and a personality that brings people together. And he meets with them, he spends a tremendous amount of time, oh, just, I mean, over the last 13 years, that he kind of took the reins and said, you know, "I want to help transform this riverfront, not for self-interest, but really for the, for the interests of our community." He has done that. And, and just in the last eight months, as difficult as that has been, he has put tremendous time, energy and passion and his brain power, his tremendous financial brain power that he brings to the table. But beyond all that, you can have people that will come in and they have, they have their own interests, their own concerns. And each and every time, Bob has a way of bringing them to say, "Wait a minute. What's for the common good, the greater good of Cincinnati?" And that's a way of bringing people together and he has done that so successfully. And for somebody that comes in and we're negotiating from one side to another, he helps find that common ground and it's worked here. I can't tell you how many times it has worked to bring us together to get to this point, to get to that vision that we're now implementing and carrying all the way through. So you asked him and he was selected by both the city and the county to be the Chair unanimously. And he's just done an incredible job that, again, you see him in those public meetings, that's one thing. But, but all the work that goes behind it, people don't see. It's all about bringing people together, you know, for us, for what we're trying to do here.
Thank you. Thank you for noting that. So we have a resolution in front of us. Administrator Aludo?
You do? You have a resolution in front of you today, which is attached to a purchase and sale agreement. So in front of you is Resolution Advancing the Bank's Project Hilltop Acquisition Bengals Lease Music Venue in Smale Park and the Development of 17 Additional Acres of Green Space on the Riverfront. It is a resolution that reflects, quite frankly, a much simpler transaction that had been previewed even, you know, a month or two months ago when we had had public hearings that involved various land swaps with the city, et cetera. This is a much simpler, just purchase agreement between the county and Hilltop Basic Resources. So it's available for your approval today. I think Tom has gone through substantively the vast majority of it, but if the board has any questions about any particular issues, again, Tom laid out the purchase price, I think he laid out the fact that that purchase price would be paid in installments, 40%, corresponding with the January 1st, 2020 acquisition date of parcel one, January 1st, 2021, corresponding with parcels two and three. There is, there's obviously an inspection period associated with it. Again, I don't want to go into excruciating detail on this, but if the board has any specific questions or wants a more thorough walkthrough of the purchase-sale agreement as it exists, again, it's, it's fairly standard in that, in that regard, but we'd be happy to do it if, if the board desires to, to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Just very quickly, I would say, Jeff, to follow up on what you just shared, I, I would encourage everybody in the room, especially our friends in the, in, excuse me, in the media, to take the time to make sure that you understand everything that's in agreement and also that you take the time to look through these, these point sheets that lay out all the benefits in, in great detail. You know, this isn't fact, or this isn't, it is fact. Let me restate that. This isn't fiction, it's fact. And it is, it lays out for everyone to see what got us here, what is there today and what the larger community of Hamilton County is going to receive as a consequence of this tremendous, tremendous agreement and, and tremendous deal. And just, Tom, you know, you mentioned Bob, I echo that, but I would also say that all the members of the Joint Banks Steering Committee, because the, the whole committee and you personally have been denigrated unfairly, unmercilessly, improperly for the work that you have done. And I hope that comes to an end. I really do.
Thank you. So by way of the resolution then, I, I would like to bring the resolution forward today just so that we can have some definitive action related to this. We've been debating this issue for a very long time, different elements of this issue for a very long time. And so I would like to do something definitive today so that we can say without question that the progress that we've already started to make relative to the infrastructure of the music venue will continue unabated and the music venue will continue unabated and hopefully, and I keep throwing out this October of 2020, I'm not going to hold anybody to that, but that's what I'm hoping for. And so, because the whole idea is to have some activity in the wintertime for the vendors and the retailers. So that, so if we can, I, I know we are all moving towards, towards that date or something close to it. And so I would like to offer the resolution to the board for passage today that so we can have something done and, and have no question about what our intentions are. So I'm going to offer that we approve of the Resolution Advancing the Bank's Project Hilltop Acquisition Bengals Lease Music Venue in Smale Park and the Development of 17 Acres of Green Space on the Riverfront.
Second.
Yes. Commissioner Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Fortin.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thanks for being here.
If we could just take one moment because it's.
Are we going to adjourn to the Holy Grail? I just want to know. Oh, I'm sorry. Everybody's here, so all these places are shut down right now? Is that what's happening?
Jefferson Social.
Jefferson, that's right, Jefferson Social. Taste of Belgium.
If we could just take one moment since this 21 years ago became a defining moment for our city, we're at that point again, because what happens here today is a defining moment for the legacy of this board. And so we thought it'd be appropriate that this board execute.
That's hilarious.
Oh, my gosh.
Execute this. And of course, this would be permanently in the county chambers.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that at all.
I know, you want to take it home.
All right.
Go ahead, Janice, you start.
For those of you that can't see this, it's the Turning Back of Time by Todd Fortin.
The power of that man.
That's very nice.
That's funny.
So each of you should execute that because this board is part of the next 21 years of what happened.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
All right. We will let you all exit the room while we continue to do our business.
We're going to, we're going to keep going here. Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it. All right. The next item on the agenda is the 2020 Budget Discussion and we are simply going to announce or rather remind people that we've got our second public hearing tonight in Silverton at the Town Hall at 6:30. Everyone is welcome to attend. We will do a, a brief overview of the budget and the sales tax recommendation at that public hearing and then hopefully have public comment at, at that hearing. So the next item on the agenda is the Community Economic Development Assistance Program. I know Joy Pearson is here from Planning and Development and Catherine Fitzgerald here is also here from HCDC. Thank you for being here. Please come forward.
Madam President, while Joy and Catherine come forward, just a, a quick introduction here. So this is, as we talked about a little bit earlier, as the board has attempted to prioritize resources that it can make available for catalytic redevelopment out in the community. It used to be that years ago, we would take our, our federal grant resources that we'd received and allocate them on a, on a very spread out basis across the county. It was several years ago in response to the board's desire to be more catalytic in its investments, that we worked with the Office of Community Development to refocus many of those into much more big-picture catalytic grant programs to spur revitalization projects in various communities. We've had several rounds of this now. So we also have a Community and Economic Development Assistance Committee that assists with the prioritization. And lastly, I'm going to follow up with some updates on the 2017 and the 2018 projects. I'm excited to tell you that this is our third year, and with the culmination of this year's funding, we've awarded almost $1.8 million, that has leveraged an additional $15.6 million. So we're getting $8.80 leveraged for every dollar that we're spending in this program. So it makes us really happy to see that. And that's just the project cost, that's not the down the road taxes and additional improvements. So with that, I'll jump on in. Our, our block grant fund is, our grant is 3.3 million this year, and we roughly spend about 43% on community projects and the balance, 15% on administration, including $100,000 of planning grants for our communities. And then the balance is spent on nonprofit services, about 27%, and then we've carved out 15% for this impactful program. The program was created in 17, as Jeff said, and we've done large-scale strategic projects for impactful development. The, the maximum project funding is $300,000, which could be in a grant or loan. And generally, if it's a loan, the term's zero percent interest for up to five years. And we now are already receiving payments back from, from loans we made, so it's continuing to replenish the pot so we can do more impactful programs. The project should spur community assets, spur development, revitalize community assets, and help us to remove blighted properties and promote economic development. I'll go ahead and let Catherine jump, oh, and this is me, sorry. The, the caveat is only our participating jurisdictions can apply for these programs, and this is the map of the 41 local governments that now participate in the, in the program.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Very quickly, just to give an overview of the applications and the recommendations of the Advisory Committee for 2019, we did receive applications for nine projects from seven communities with total requests of 1.6 million. So obviously, the requests were far greater than what we have funding for. We had a number, the Advisory Committee did meet early to take a look at the projects and recommend which communities they would like to come in for presentations. They are listed here as far as the quote-unquote finalists for the C-DAP projects. So the recommendations for, from the Advisory Committee, Joy and I basically staffed it, answered questions, those kinds of things, but the Advisory Committee did the deep dive into the projects. I will note that the communities were invited and did do presentations as well, answered questions by the, that the Advisory Committee had. So again, we had, we actually funded $600,000 in the way of $450,000 in grants and $150,000 in loans. Total, the project totals for those, those projects were actually almost $14 million, so leveraging quite a bit there. The first project is, that I'll go over very quickly, Delhi, the demolition of the former Remke property, it's actually a 13-acre site. They, they requested $125,000 grant. The total project cost is actually 3.5 million, so obviously leveraging quite a bit of money there. The building is 130 square feet, it's actually a 13-acre site. It is part of a recently adopted plan by the township, the Plan the Pike. They're talking about collaboration with Mount St. Joe, as well as Oak Hill School District for a possible recreation center. Second project is actually two projects that, two requests that we received from the City of Loveland. First off, a $35,000 grant, secondly, a $60,000 loan. It is for a parking garage project of $7.8 million. It will actually add 330 parking spaces in downtown Loveland. It'll be a surface lot and a three-story parking garage. This is, the funding that they requested is for demolition and secondary access to Next project that I'd like to go over is the City of Redding. The project includes a $200,000 grant, $90,000 loan for a $669,000 project to extend North Redding Road. This is basically 11 acres that they are, the City of Redding is partnering with General Tool, who is located there, to help them expand their operation. There will also be several outlets for build-to-suit buildings. Just as a reminder, General Tool has, they will be retaining 285 jobs and adding 25 in Phase One. Picture of the site. Last project, Springfield Township, this is for Galbraith Road improvements, pre-development improvements, $90,000 grant. It's a million-dollar project. The Committee basically approved the pre-development request because the actual construction won't occur until 2021. We anticipate that they'll come back to the program for funding next year.
So I get the fun part of telling you about the successes and the projects that have been completed in recent years. The first one is Reesenberg Avenue Improvement Project. And it is, we, we provided them with a loan for $300,000. You may remember, this is connected to a road that needed to be improved for the MSD facility there in order to be in compliance with the consent decree. It also opened up two key parcels for redevelopment, and I'm happy to announce that the Port Authority's going to close on the sale of these two parcels in the beginning of November. And their end user is bringing 400 jobs, and the investment for the project will be $37 million. So we're quite pleased with that, and so is the City of Redding. There's a picture, I think, the next couple months, I picked the other. This is the road improvement that was extended and deepened, because the capacity wasn't there for the heavy trucks and the commercial loads. I never got so excited about a street until I heard about this, 400 jobs and $37 million this morning, so it looks gorgeous. The next one is the Silverton Streetscape Improvement Program, or Project, and this is basically connecting the AG 47 at the corner of Stewart and Montgomery down to Plainfield Road and along the side where the post office is. So it's connected all the way down to High Grain Brewing Company, and then you can cross Plainfield to get to Myers and the Italianette Kitchen. There's some, we also awarded them a planning grant, they're looking at a beer and wine district in connection with this work. So that's a fun project, and obviously it's brought a lot of development to, you know, helped to complement the development going on in Silverton. A next 17 project was a Springfield, in Springfield Township, a beautiful mural and pedestrian plaza that is now a community gathering space. Artworks had students that had summer jobs working on the mural, and the artist is from Springfield Township. That's actually depicted on a skateboard. He owns a skateboard company, and he plans to bring his business back to Ohio, back to Springfield Township. But it's quite beautiful, it's called the Creatress. The next project is demolition of the North Point Shopping Center to make way for Magnum Machines' expansion. They were, they've, they've been in Forest Park for a long time and wanted to stay there. They're, we were able to retain 125 jobs, and they'll be adding 20 positions, and their total payroll will be over $8.5 million a year. The 18 projects include the Sterns Foster Acquisition and Remediation Project, if you want to go forward a little bit, yeah. The, the parcels on the right, the lower side there, were owned by a private owner, and HCDC worked for years along with the village to be able to acquire that, those parcels. And they also have done the environmental review work, environmental Phase Ones and Phase Twos, and secured the, the funding needed for some remediation of the brown field. So in June, they went out with an RFP for preferred developer, and I'm told they're in negotiation with the developer for, for a final preferred developer, and then that, that developer will go out with proposals, or will solicit projects. The total cost of this portion of the project is 2.5 million. In North Bend, we had a multifamily property that was a, a big nuisance. It'd been added on to several times, and it had captive apartments, where you had to walk through one apartment to get to another. It basically was being run like a drug house. Unfortunately, two people overdosed and died there, which prompted the prosecutor to declare it a nuisance. So as part of a settlement with the private owner and the village and the prosecutor, we provided funding to assist in the demolition. There is a lien on the property so that there's not a subsidy going to the owner, that that money will be paid back if and when the property is sold. And then we have a project that was awarded last year with the Village of Lincoln Heights. The original project was an ask for $300,000 with, to help demolish the former high school, and they, they had estimated the project at 400,000. The Advisory Committee raised concerns about that being an actual good number, and also wanted to look more into the market analysis and look and see what could be redone there or if the building could be salvaged. And I know that there are community members that want to save the high school. So we're going through the process of historic review right now, and there will be a public hearing in November. The property itself is in very bad shape, the pictures to the left are inside of the building. We went in there with hard hats and, and cameras and took many, many pictures in the 43 different rooms that are in that building, it's very, very large. So there's a process that we go through for historic review. If it's determined that demolition is the, is the best option, we do have to make amends or make mitigating, some kind of mitigating action to offset the adverse effect of the demolition if it's a historically significant property, and we believe that it is. That could be something like doing placards and signage and creating some history and marketing and embracing of the village history and, and sharing that in a meaningful way. But there are all other options that we will look at as well. Sometimes the option is to look at another historic site and make investment in that. So there, there is an elementary school next door to this that's in better shape. So there are all kinds of options that will be on the table. The, the other school is owned by a private owner, so right now, we're, that's not a site control issue, that, we don't have site control that, or the village doesn't. And as part of this as well, the Advisory Committee recommended a $20,000 award for the Urban Land Institute of Cincinnati to provide a technical assistance panel, and that took place in June. The final report will be coming out in the next week or so, and that'll be presented to the Village Council in November with suggestions about redevelopment in general for the whole village. And then lastly, Gulf Manor also asked for some funding for some business district development, but the Advisory Committee felt it would be best to kind of put the, the horse before the cart, if that's the right expression, and do a tap there as well, because the, the options were sort of all over the map. And so with that, let's look at Gulf Manor as a whole village and determine what the best options are there with real estate professionals and developers and local officials giving some advice. And then they set aside 50, $30,000 for environmental studies on two properties, but as of yet, the property owners are not willing to, to have that work done. So we're, both of those, those taps, the ULI taps, are technically mini-grants, but we were able to work with this funding that we had available last year. We wanted to, we wanted to kickstart things and keep it moving and not have those villages wait for another year. There are a couple of projects that were canceled, so, and I bring this up to tell you that we expect projects to fall through, and that's, that's okay. We want to take risks and we want to, we're not paying any money back, no money was spent, but that money goes back into the pot for the following year. The City of Harrison requested $195,000 to buy and renovate a historic building, and it turned out that through their process of soliciting proposals, a private developer came through and wanted to do it all on his own. So that's great, we don't need to subsidize that activity or that project. Then Woodlawn Business, Village of Woodlawn was trying to assemble land and around their business park, but one of the property owners valued their property more high than the appraiser did, so we just couldn't come to an agreement there. And then lastly, Anderson Township had requested and received $75,000, which was half of the cost, to demolish part of a shopping center, and the property owner stopped communicating. So we don't know if the project's going to go forward or not, but they asked us to re, to reallocate the funding to keep it moving.
Just very quickly, again, on the subject of connecting this to the 2020 Budget, I think you've seen what our staff has been able to do on a very limited amount of, of resources, and I want to congratulate Community Development HCDC for the impact that they're able, able to make. You see all these projects and the impact, that each of these is a game-changing project within these communities, and they're doing that on the limited amount of resources available through the, through the federal funds that we get. The 2020 Recommended Budget, while of course still open and amenable to board policy direction and change, but the way it was at least teed up to the Board over the next two years expands that, the, the amount of grants by roughly 600%. So think about the types of things that we've been able to do here and expanding that, and we put that in the budget specifically because of the Board's continual policy imperative to try to do, to be much more partnering with our communities to help them in their efforts to revitalize. So as we go into the, the second budget hearing tonight, I just wanted to call your attention to that.
What is the dollar amount associated with that in the general fund?
Again, the general fund, over the next two years, it allocates, so again, it's kind of, it's a ramp up, so I think in the first year, it's $2.5 million, then an additional million in the second year. So on an annual basis thereafter, it'd be about $3.5 million towards economic development, catalytic economic development projects. Still, of course, needing to be refined by the policy fingerprint of the Board, if you will, in terms of how you would want to see that work.
I think, I assume that you would testify to the fact that that could be easily used out in these communities, given the requests that we get, so, just to verify that, yeah, okay.
Most definitely.
Yeah, all right, great, well, thank you. Thank you for this report. It's, this is the fun part of the job, right, seeing some of these things come to fruition and understanding the impact that it has on these communities and jurisdictions throughout the county. Any questions or comments?
Madam President.
Yeah.
A great report, so very good to see the progress that's being made with the little amount of money and being able to leverage it. On the second page where you had Hamilton County CDBG participating jurisdictions, do you have a list of that, those three categories? Can I just get the list?
Sure.
Yeah, that'll help, thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have a comment about Lincoln Heights and that building specifically. I have a lot of history with that, so if you have any questions, we can get together on that and, and pictures and things like that, okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Madam President, just wanted to follow up on the impact of our Office of Inclusion and Inclusion Advisory Board. Do you, do you interact with Robert Bell on these projects and awards at all?
Yes, we do. Not only just for this program, but for any time that we're using block rent money or home money for projects, whether it's construction or administration and planning, we always, we always check in with him and then share that information with our local governments. And the number of businesses that he has on his list changes, increases all the time. So I can share a separate report with you with the use of Section 3 contractors and also MBEs. We have to submit those to HUD twice a year, so I'll make sure that you have a copy of those.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that whenever that is available. Great, yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments?
No, have any.
All right, great, thank you. Thanks so much for being here and for the report. Unless there's anything further, we've got a couple of executive sessions, so I will move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G4 to conduct or review negotiations or bargaining sessions concerning employee compensation or the terms and conditions of their employment, and in executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning the subject of MSD.
Second.
Commissioner Greenhouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Somar Duma.
Yes.
Commissioner Fortin.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.[1696.65]